Okay, we'll call me in order.
Paulski. Covert.
Present.
Marsh.
Present.
Fluck.
Here.
Keely. Here. Roberts.
There.
Carty.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Hubbard. Here. Bruterly. Here.
Here. Very good. Action meeting minutes for July 5. Or any comments?
Action meeting minutes.
Second. I found a little. Oh. Table. Page two. It must be tasking room. I would imagine that's supposed to be.
Under my report?
Under, yeah. Second. Good job.
Yep. Thank you.
Somewhere didn't we have electing officers again?
Yes, that'll be under the agenda. You can take it off on that.
Yeah, right. Okay. Very good. Thank you, Chuck. Landing of motion.
And on page one. Unless it somehow printed weirdly, I might be up. Six A. It just depends as. Mr. Covert will join the next meeting in person as the meeting. You don't know what.
He's on assignment.
As the new member. Of the PC.
Great.
Thank you all. You can just.
Oh, and say, okay, all in favor?
I.
Prose. Thank you. Most materials. Approval of the agenda. That's where I'm getting the. We saw it already.
Yes, with the removal of ninety. All of the agenda.
Second.
He gets.
For.
Who is the second party?
Party? Sure. Um, any other amendments? All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Prose. Do. Motion carries, public hearing. Learning ordinance update. Reschedule to September 6. Pre-range participation. Comments? We've limited to ten minutes. On the audience who would like to comment, please step forward and state your name and address.
Well, I'm joining that.
See, none. Falls the. Uh, pre-range participation. There is none. Oh, there is none, right? Reports.
That's okay.
Report to the officers. Chairman report. I have a nothing report. Planning commissioners, executive. Do you think well?
I've got some stuff. We've had since the last meeting, planning commission. We've had two more work sessions, both the fire station as well as a regular meeting. Agenda item, discussion item. So we're still doing a lot of discussing. And we've got one more regular council meeting for the deadline. It's something on the ballot. So if we want to do that, we either have a special meeting after that meeting to make a vote on that or vote on that on Monday at our next meeting. So we've been looking at a scaled down version, a new station, an extra inner row to try to keep us down. Really starting to talk about some compromises, I think. So hopefully we're going in a good direction there. We'll see what happens. And we definitely have been talking about if we do put something on the ballot, the importance of educating the public prior to the election. About what it means in terms of. Numbers, like, you know, tax increase per household. And what, you know, what it means in terms of the actual station and the need and that type of thing, so. I think, you know, I mean, I think we're actually hopefully, we might, might be getting somewhere. Good. We also voted, already voted to put language on the ballot and remember to amend the amendment to the charter. So that we can. If, if that passes, it would say that the city could start to sell personal property again like we used to, like the old vehicles and other. It wouldn't make any other changes to, you know, the sale of real property. But I think it's been clear that that was sort of an unintended consequence of that. At least that's what we've discussed in meetings. So there's that. We did approve the kids' modestory. I'm kind of glad Matt's not hearing anything in our time about that. Um, and then the last thing that was kind of interesting is we had a discussion item about whether or not we wanted to sell the building Hotel Pickman is in. To be honest, I'm not really sure where that came from. Maybe Michelle knows why that came up.
I think in the past Scott has, the owner of the topic then, has made inquiries about potentially purchasing it, and that may have been what prompted the discussion.
I just thought that at the meeting, we did ask that directly. Justin had said this time around that we hadn't, but if he hasn't in the past, maybe it's just something we're generally talking about.
When the lease comes out.
Yeah, because the lease is coming up in September. Yes, October. So, you know, we had that. We obviously didn't make any decisions. But it is something we're talking about. Personally, I brought up the point that, you know, we just amend, amend the lease to, to address some of the concerns on the members of council had about. You know, the fact that we have this to take care of now and trying to take off some of the stress from the DPW maintaining buildings. There's no reason you can't build that into a commercial lease. So there's no reason we can't say, you guys can start doing that. We don't need to be here fixing anything that's not a major problem. But that's just, that was just me. Nobody else. When I brought that up, I think that maybe one or two other council members agreed with that, but we'll see where that discussion goes. And then the last thing is, and I'm going to let you and you and whoever else talk more about it. We did have some discussions and a presentation from a developer about the Sloan Kingsley property. So thank you for bearing with me. That's a lot, but we've been doing a lot.
I had a quick question about the fire station. Has there been discussion of phasing it yet?
Yes.
Okay.
That is something that has been in the discussions as a problem, potential problem.
Awesome. Thank you, Ron.
Yes.
What was the presentation like?
Um, there are certain members of council that thought it was not really specific enough. That it didn't really give an idea of what the development would look like. There were the members of council that were fully in support of it. I would say there's one, Zachors. Sorry, Councilwoman Michelle's. And then the other person that I was, that was Councilmember Eric was the one who had the concerns. And she has been paying closer attention to it, I think, than a lot of us because she does back up to the property. And she was president of the Dexter Crossing HOA for a while. So she's very well versed in the history of what's been going on there. So she was the one, I think, wanted to see more detail. I had questions about. Attainable housing. That was a thing that kept being discussed in the presentation. Wanted to know what that meant. And I'm not sure I've really got a clear answer, but. It was, it was interesting. It's been, you know, I mean, this comes up all the time. Here we are again, talking about it. See what happens.
We can provide more when we get to my report.
Very good. Anybody else? I'd like to welcome Tom over to the planning commission. A lot of us know him. You were on the planning mission before, correct?
I've been on the planning commission before the DDA and currently sit on the economic development council.
Awesome. Well, welcome again. Very good. Uh, committee reports.
No, unless I'm mistaken, there was no VBA or by, once removed.
The, there was no, there was no VBA. Oh, yeah, we had a July one. We were there.
Was that the three point eight? Various?
Yeah. That was the one for the deck in the rear of the house.
Now, and I wasn't awake. We approved the deck which infringed greatly into the rear setback. Reduced the setback from twenty-five feet to nine feet, something like that. Simply because the house is set so far back on the, in the lot. Because it's a pie-shaped lot that to build a deck at all require variance. And it was drafted.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, can you go then?
Okay, so you've got my report. Excuse me. We have. It's a very interesting time to be in the city right now. And because to the north of the city boundaries, we have Corbin Farms asking to connect water and sewer, which could be an annex, which in order to do that would mean an annexation. And we have the Sloan Kingsley property that Mr. Lutton is. An owner of, one of the others, who's also looking to bring, to have that connected to water and sewer and bring that into the city. We are currently setting up a meeting, internal meeting for Corbin Farms to go over some information that they've provided. I calculated out from getting to the. Getting to the. Final stages of calculating out what potential taxes could be. It's been an interesting exercise. It dovetails pretty, it dovetails well with the rate study that the city is currently having. Our specialized accounting firm, and their name is escaping me right now. But they're doing a rate study, which is something we regularly do. And then we will also be looking at exactly. What, any connection or any extension will take. Where are the, where's the water? Where's the sewer? How will this all be connected? And then we will also be looking to have another follow-up meeting with Corbin Farms and start to discuss what our findings are, what their cost implications will be, could be, should say. And then potentially begin to negotiate. Of the, the potential to use some of their property that's currently Webster Township under the four twenty-five agreement, who are possible to. And that's if the Sloan Kingsley development should progress. And right now, that's one hundred percent in the township's. Corporate now. What they decide to do or not will ultimately dictate what the city does or doesn't do. What comes next, if it should go forward and start negotiation for a potential water well on that property could also be one of the things that we'll be looking at. We have a new business coming in. I just heard from her today at eight oh seven Main Street. So that old commerce building that was a theater at one time, and now is a bunch of different offices. She's. A home curator, so. Trinkies and things like that, decorating. So she's starting her business there. Yeah.
Okay.
That's it.
Very good. Thank you, Michelle.
Unless you've got any questions.
Good, thank you. So next item, I'm seven, citizens wishing for a breast mission.
None.
See, none. None citizens. So. I mean, all this. Grab ordinance update.
Good evening. Megan Massimina and Carla Wartman Associates. First, I want to thank your staff particularly Grace, who has been avidly proofreading those zoning ordinance. And so sends me a couple of emails a week. So it's great. I just want to update you on what we had. Done between last month and this month in terms of zoning ordinance update. And if you read the cover memo, we've got two decisions. So we updated the tree replacement tables for a one-to-one replacement just for landmark trees. We added microbrewers, small distillers, small winemakers to the definitions and added those as special land uses in the central business district, village commercial. In our. In our Dexter Road and Baker Road corridor districts. And those also had tasting rooms that are accessory to those. Alcohol production uses. In the required parking spaces, we updated it as we had discussed. I'm not going to go into that here. And, but the main thing that we spent a lot of time on is looking at a five-minute parker, a five-minute walk parking waiver. And so what I did in this one was I just cut and paste of the section from it rather than you trying to find it in any drafts that we had sent you. And what you had asked for was some standards. And also some ratios based on place. When Michelle and I talked about it. She pointed out that in this regulation, we had fifty percent. That on-street parking spaces, not within-street frontage of the site, public parking spaces and spaces musically and what could be counted for, she said fifty percent, proposing fifty percent. In the VC zoning district and up to twenty-five percent in ARC, BRC, I want our BAP. And then things that are other than single family use in the village residential districts, one and two. And those were not, I looked at it in there. I looked at a lot of different ordinances where they looked at waivers and typically it was really close to downtown, it was fifty percent. And the further it got, out it got, the less it got, but the smallest I really saw was twenty-five percent. So I think those two, we can go to a ratio of one to four, one to two. But at that point, having just about fifty percent, twenty-five percent was the easier nomenclature to use. So that whoever's administering it doesn't have, has to do less than that. So. But would be really interested in what your reaction was to that, if you feel like that is what you want. Whether it, whether it should be removed and we should go back to what we had. But we're looking at a public hearing in September, so we need a final decision.
So we've added a walkable radius to parking, which you can count, kind of like we did it on tour with the museum.
And asking for a formalized plan for when people do that. So if somebody wants to take this option, they have to submit a plan and there are guidelines on what those plans are. So we didn't have to go two rounds like we did with on four. And then also, and I've seen this with other clients who are. Dealing with marijuana uses, asking for a parking demand study. Certainly for use that maybe you haven't had in the city. You don't know how it's going to react. It's a new use. When you planning permission deal unsure about that, then you can ask for that and that's cited in this as well.
Can I ask a couple of questions just to get off the screen? With regard to the five-minute walk. Do we get into any issues from an ADA perspective when we say walk? And then my next question is, that seemed a little ambiguous for me because. I walk a different distance in five minutes than maybe everybody else in this room. So to me, it would seem, my sense is to keep this to block length. And I think that's how I had that previously. So I'm looking, because it wasn't at three hundred feet. And generally the blocks are three hundred to four hundred feet in Dexter.
Previously it was five hundred feet. Which is pretty standard zoning ordinance language. Can relate to a block. In the language you'll see, we use one thousand three hundred and twenty feet. Which is an approximate of a five-minute walk. But all.
It's recognizable standard.
Yeah.
Yes, definitely gets past that time is that, is that, that we're referring to a standard as a, as an analogy. It's not a literal. You know, it's not like the applicants kind of like talk about how fast they walk or something like that.
But. Yeah, also, but if you look at item F, which is on the bottom of. The second page of my memo, so that's page twenty-two of sixty-one of your packet. One of the standards is the pedestrian network between the site and the parking spaces considering the waiver would support a year-round walk of no more than five minutes. So let's say something was within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet.
But over the river.
But over the river or particularly hilly or in a place where snow isn't cleared. Then you planning commission can say, we don't feel comfortable with this.
So when you said the standard for this was one thousand some odd feet. Is that in your memo here? Did I just miss that or is?
No, that wasn't in the memo. That was in a previous memo.
This is like the meeting before you go ahead.
Yeah.
We came up with this very specific number, which I can't remember.
Yeah, that.
As opposed to saying a five-minute walk as the crow flies.
That brings up a good point about us having that in our definitions.
The five-minute walk?
Five-minute walk. In your definitions, you should have a five-minute walk. And reference a standard for walking.
And walkable feet, right? Going on a. Can't be as the crow flies.
We can also, we can also add a graphic. So that it shows me, like I did for the report for Mill Creek Brewery, where it showed five-minute walk to different places within town. We can do that. We can do graphics. But instead of the particular place, we start from the center of the town and go to different ones. That would at least provide that visual.
So the public route, just have to be a public route?
Yes. So yes.
That should be made clear.
Yeah, I would use words in addition to my graphics. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And numbers. So I have a question, boss. Cleaning up a couple of thoughts. It's not quite like the on four, because they paid for that. They paid for access to that. It wouldn't apply. ADA only pertains to parking you are providing on-site. So. At least I'm pretty sure about that. I like this. I like that it's in May. I like that it's got the standard. Well, I'll say to the group, I think part of why we're here is because we had so much. Spirit of debate over when to waive parking and when not to waive parking. And again, I like this. I'll be happy to go for it. It's not going to end our spirited debate because it's a May. It's a May. It gives us full discretion. And I think that's good because I think there are places in town where we'll look at the one thousand three hundred and twenty feet parking and say, well. That's already hurt by a lot of other businesses that we already gave a break on it and can't keep doing that. And it's crowded there. Maybe we won't give a waiver at that point. But it gives us, the May gives us the discretion. The use of public park D shall not adversely affect parking for surrounding areas. That's, that's all our discretion. That's a discretionary decision. So. I like this because it's a black and white standard. It gives a distance. That then allows us to acquire discretion. But it's not going to fix our problem that we've been having. We're still going to have, I think, some spirited discussions about when we should be waiving parking. We're just going to be waving it in a different way.
Right. And Megan will follow up with this too. You still. The way that the ordinance has been set up. Again, like you said, this is May. If somebody were to come in and ask for a waiver. You don't waive everything that they've asked for. You still have that in the rule of option. So it is, the way this is written is actually much clearer, like you said. Than it, than the current ordinance is.
I do agree with that. But I'll say, for instance, our most recent discussion, I won't waive for that property because I don't think. I just, I don't, I don't think that that's a very walkable way over that bridge.
So I think you bring up something that, that I think we need to still add. And again, I'll go back to the report that I did when, when they were coming to review and came due for the parking standard. There was a specific language of factors that you need to consider. Environment. In other words, weather conditions. Is it a grid pattern? Is it set up? Are there sidewalk ramps when you're crossing the street? Is it an interesting walk? Is it a safe walk? I think those are things that I can work with Megan to make sure we find a way to put into because that also. It makes it very focused for you. It gives you a stronger foundation. It gives you a strong foundation. As opposed to. Not having it there. I just think it makes it a little bit, gives it a little bit more teeth for it.
Michelle, my lawyer, having, I can't ever put a name, but it is an interesting walk. That's just the most.
So from a planning standpoint, there is that term interesting walk. It is. What would be the best way to say that?
Well. There, there are metrics to interesting.
That's an arbitrary, that's an arbitrary and capricious ruling from a judge just waiting to happen.
Right. No, we would have to go into more detail what the interesting is. So I would feel like the safe is something that can be easily measured. In terms of, you know, I can give you metrics in terms of interesting. It's whether the, it's a, it's a, the path moves, whether what's around. But it's not that there's some variety in the walk and what's surrounding it. It's not monotonous, things like that. But I, to put that in zoning ordinance and then for that to be implemented well over time. Is. Might be difficult. I think we can work together and bring some things, but I, I hear you on the definition of terms and, and the interpretation.
But how do we do that if we want to have a plan, if we want to have a public hearing next month? How are you going to beat this language up again? I mean, we're going to be.
Because you still get the chance to look at it at the pump here. Just because you have a.
No, but essentially we can't change it at that point.
Oh, you can.
Okay.
Why not just leave the word interesting out of the definition?
We could do that.
I mean, to me, I totally agree how you define that. And there are all these ways, metrics perhaps, nevertheless. What's interesting to you might be uninteresting to me. I might like that straightener.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say. You might get some weirdo like me that's like, ooh, the concrete is interesting. Let me see. Flat with concrete, you know, it's like, I agree with you that that's not. Also. I know this isn't, like, I know you guys want another opportunity, but we as council then have another chance to look at it too. So it's not, yeah.
But I think, I mean, I think you really took what people said last meeting and really came up with something solid.
Thank you. I'm stressed safety. I was just thinking about this building. If this were going to be City Hall. You, you do not have a safe walk when you cross the tracks here. You just don't. And so you really have to work with what's on your mind. And what's here, which is not allowed parking for a fair number of employees. And I'm not sure we give a pass the test. And, you know, so safety, I mean, what is, you know, it's a. I think safe is really pretty. We're not, we're not talking about downtown, we're talking about sidewalks. We're talking about outside of it. And you get a lot more interesting walks. Where, you know, because of, where the sidewalk just stops and, you know, that kind of interest.
So I think in terms of what we discussed, if we just, and then item F to say the pedestrian network between the site and the parking spaces considered the waiver would support a safe, comma, year, year-round walk on a public route of no more than five minutes. That puts that language in the, of what we've discussed. Is that good enough to go forward to the public hearing?
Yeah. I think so.
Portraits.
I like the second one.
Okay. Let's, let me just introduce this is that we've talked about residential use in reform-based districts. Let's, let me just introduce this is that we've talked about in residential use in reform based district. That was definitely encouraged those front porches. So how do you do that? But then not being too big, that and whatnot. One was a size limit. One was a percentage of lot size. Another was exclusion from lot coverage. It's our recommendation that just excluding that front porch from lot coverage is the easiest and cleanest thing to do. Otherwise, again, we're getting more calculations, more math, more notes on, on the building forms, things like that. However, you all feel strongly because that's the way that we need to go. We can do it. So. In terms of that recommendation, we laid out what you would do is that we'd have to update. A number of the residential building forms to exclude the unenclosed front porches. We have to add definitions. And update the definition of lot coverage.
What about setbacks? They're not, they're not a setback.
The, if you, in the residential's building form, so the. The single family and the two family, there is a front porch setback. And we could make that specifically for unenclosed porches rather than enclosed porches. And instead is five feet more than the one for the front facade.
Lot covered?
Yeah.
Decks are included in that calculation?
Currently, yes.
And unenclosed porch are not, based on what we're talking about right now. To me, those. That are arbitrary and I understand the reason for doing that. What happens if somebody comes in with a deck and they put a roof over it and say, this is an unenclosed porch? Really, it's a deck with a canvas roof on it or something. My point is, they both cover the same amount of space on the ground.
Dexter generally pervious also.
And those could be excluded as well.
I agree. I think it's excluded.
The other question I've got is stairways.
Oh, not.
Like the front porch stairs.
Like your front porch stairs, the stairs from the downstairs.
So decks and stairways. So lot coverage would then be including buildings, accessory, buildings and accessories. Accessory buildings and structures, comments such as not limited to enclosed porches, breezeways and swimming pools. But excluding sidewalks, driveways within our yards and unenclosed porches, decks and stairways.
Unenclosed porches in the front yard.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's what I had before. So.
If we're just giving decks a full waiver, like.
Or maybe it's just in the front yard. And one of the reasons to limit those again is pervious or impervious surface. You don't have, again, as compared to some of my other clients where they were all built on clay. You don't have the same flooding problems, but you do have increased storm events. So. Generally, it's recommended to keep. The restrictions setting for the service as much, but as Commissioner Phillips pointed out, the decks in particular usually are pervious.
Yeah. And this is actually a much bigger deal in the old days when a lot of houses were tied into storm systems. And so the barriers were running into the sewer. They were running on the sun. So if the whole kind of issue was changed over the decades.
And the clients I'm mentioning also are in Oakland County and have combined scores. So maybe we take off the, in the front yard and just have all of those not part.
Well, the decks in the backyard too.
Well, the only question I've got about that is the whole, what led us here was to encourage porches in the front, right? So maybe we all want to. But I can see a situation where like a covered breezeway, like going across from the library. That's kind of like four, temporarily closed, you know, that little roof connector. Would that be?
If you get space, it would be.
I would say for sure that it's. Does a screen out then as a closure?
I think we could, we could call it breezeway and we could exclude the real waste for the exception. I have a strong feeling about it. I'm just saying, we're trying to encourage about porches. And correct things that we really shouldn't have had in the past.
If your breezeway is over any type of concrete, it sets up the ability for that to become enclosed. And I believe that's the reason we've always included breezeways as part of lot coverage. We could carve out language as long as there's no concrete underneath, but obviously say it in a better way, but.
Yeah, we could say permanent foundation.
They have to pull a permit to. To enclose a breezeway or to enclose a porch or.
Yeah, it just couldn't be closed if it was already over the lot. If you were under, you had a breezeway connector, why do you could go? Get that enclosed, but you know, they would, that whatever, two hundred square feet, as long as you didn't put it over your lot covered. You could enclose that thing. If it would, then you have to leave it open. That, you know, I mean, all of a sudden, you're moving into the other enclosed category. And another thing to think of with the breezeways is that, you know, it's nice to do a house with a attached garage, but. You know, attach it with a little covered roof. Although honestly, most people want. Like a monorail connector breezer. So mostly condos end up being enclosed anyway. It's very rare that you do an open, who would open one.
Yeah, they don't really do. I think you, well, we can talk about that for hours. I think you know what we're talking about.
So what I'm hearing is that we do want to encourage front porches. Everyone is in favor of the method of doing it by the exclusion from lot coverage. But at the same time, I feel like there are some historical design mistakes in the lot coverage definition. Whereas if we moved unenclosed decks and stairways, whatever yard they are in. Add to be excluded, then that is a good opportunity. We should do that.
Let me ask you a question. Is this in fact going to do what we want it to do? How many times are people so close to their lot coverage? That that's going to make a difference?
In the time that I've been there, I think there's been a handful. And what I, what I do is. If they're at the lot coverage, they have to. Submit a written statement that they know that they're at lot coverage. Because for some, especially one in Westridge, it meant they could not have a deck. And they, and they had a walkout basement. It's like, if you, if you. Make the house this large, you won't be able to have. A deck. It's just, it's just not the way the ordinance is currently written.
But now they do.
This would now allow them to.
I think there's a lot of smaller lots in town. That could be remodeled over time. And not now, for lots that could be split. And this could help with that process.
And I think the, the five foot difference in the front setback and the front porch setback is really where it's going to help. Because.
Just clarify, was that up? Wasn't it written that it's five feet off the property line instead of fifteen? Or is it like, you can go a certain amount of ground from the house?
The porch setback is ten and the house setback is fifteen from the front, from the front property line. And then the garage needs to be five feet behind. The front facade. So it goes ten, fifteen, twenty. So we've got multiple layers in there to, to help the front. Okay, so we have decisions and then I know staff is. Sending out, drafting letters and sending them out.
So Grace will let you know. When Megan said she's been doing a lot of work on this.
Yeah, so just this morning, we sent out letters we delivered at the post office. There's. Seven hundred eighty-two letters going out for every property in town that. It's undergoing a change in zoning or is proposed to undergo a change in zoning with the new ordinance. So. Basically, I took the G I F data that Mike sent to me and created a table of all the addresses that are proposed to. Change zoning. They have the property owner's information, mailing information. And so then. Every single one of those got a letter notifying them about the date of the public hearing and. How to contact me, Michelle, if they have any questions, as well as a page. About how the process of updating the zoning and subdivision ordinances work. And then. All of them got an individualized, more or less individualized letter about how the zoning change is going to affect their property specifically. So for most of them, it's simply a table that includes the uses that were permitted in their current district. And the uses that are supposed to be permitted in their updated district. And then for any of the form based districts, I also went through and found the site type and the street type that they're on. And used the tables in the draft to determine what type of building forms they're allowed to have and included that in their letter as well. So. Took a lot of time. I spent probably like the last two weeks on and off working on getting everything organized. And then I spent the whole day, Thursday, Friday, and about four hours on Saturday. Getting everyone's letters organized to the right people. And this morning, I postmarked them and sent them to the post office. So. Everyone should be getting those shortly.
Good. Thank you. Awesome.
Thanks for. I have just a few final items, questions about that. So at one point, I brought up the idea that. The height in the residential zone right now is thirty-five feet. I didn't see that addressed. I did a.
That's the center of the roof.
That's to the midpoint of the gable. Alright, so I'm just going to try to show this. Okay, so thirty-five feet potentially. That's really more what it is. Everybody thinks it's a three story building. The same. It's a squat three story building.
Yeah.
It's not a good three story.
We, we checked the heights though that were in the zoning.
Absolutely. And thirty-five feet is a recurring. It's just a number that came from somewhere.
Yeah, because that's like a flat.
Yeah, neither, you have to do a flat, huge house to hit three story when you can, but you shouldn't. You can't do a nice steep roof on three story, which is how. You see what I mean? As a building goes up theoretically, especially in a residential zone, the roof should get steep. But we're actually forcing a very flat three story building if somebody wants to do it and allowing it. So the way I've seen it changed is that instead of measuring to the midpoint of the gable. See, what you want to do is encourage a big roof, not a flat roof, three story. So the way to do it. See, flat roofs, they measure to the parapet, which is essentially the gutter line. The history, if you measure to the midpoint of the gable. So the solution to that is actually to measure to the gutter height on the house. And allowing a steeper roof if it would happen. Instead of, see what I mean, like bring that thirty-five feet down, but measure it off the gutter instead. And so that brings up the question, do we want three story?
I, I don't think it was designed for three stories. Do we limit the number of stories?
Yeah.
I think we allow, right?
We allow two.
Yeah, so that to be, it sounds like it's designed for a tall two story with a seafloor. Not, not a three story at all. If we want to have three story houses, which are perfectly cool sometimes. That's a whole, that's a different, that's an ordinance change.
That's in a different zone. Yeah. So you're saying that it's, we've got a two story max.
Yeah, I might be a two story.
Your current, the current is two and a half, two and a half. So.
So you're going to do a full three story.
So a house is thirty-five, yeah, house to family is. House and two family is two and a half stories, thirty-five feet. A multiple family building is three stories, forty-five feet.
That's another new one?
That, that's what's proposed in the townhouse attached residential is three stories, forty-five feet.
So that's, so then we're covered.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything?
I have one other slight. It's a minor thing, but I'm wondering about, we have. The ability to put a shed with a certain height, you know, back gutter. Right up tied to a fence on the property line, instead of needing to keep it three feet off the property line. You follow?
Yeah, can we do it?
I think you have to keep the shed off the.
It's a detached accessory structure, you need three feet on any side of your property line.
So could you go like under, under the two hundred square feet, let's say for example, and providing a six or seven foot. You could get that shed all the way back to whatever fence you've got in the back of your yard. Well, it just makes, I mean, it's, it's kind of more of a traditional shed arrangement. You wouldn't really hold that off there. A lot, you see a lot of times the sheds pushed up right to the fence line. In fact, sometimes you run your. Fence right to the edges of the shed and let it become part of the. This is not a criticism because I'm being sincerely like, God bless you, forget it. Because I can't. But I don't know exactly what you're saying. Are you saying we should allow?
I think we should allow. Pushed right up.
I just wasn't sure.
I can, I would, I would speak against that because what you're doing is you're setting up. A situation where there's a building that cannot be maintained very well. The neighbors have to look at. So I just, I think that's a really bad idea. And even if you can go, it's really a good idea. There's a way to solve that and that's the fence has been, you know, required by the setback.
It's also a crack in the root of leaves and stuff and the drainage come on your neighbors.
And I, I haven't tested, I haven't encountered this in a lakefront community. When an accessory building was on the property line and there was a neighborly dispute. The. Property owner would not allow, the next door neighbor would not allow the property owner to maintain or paint. That accessory building. Because of their conflict. So it led to, like, I mean, that's an extreme example, but maintaining that three feet. Three to five, three feet allows somebody to get there and maintain and take care of it. I do understand your perspective though in terms of.
Property organization.
Throwing, yeah, stretching out the lot and I'm appreciating how that would look, but.
They're going to small lot, three feet, not a lot of space.
Yeah, because you're a lot like me.
But okay, but I, I live on a small lot, as we know. And I care and agree on a point that I didn't even think of. About the maintenance and mine is not conforming. I've never even seen one side of my garage because I'd have to be in Bob Stacy's backyard. I'm not going in there without his permission. So I get, you know, I mean, it means work, but can't.
This happens even with high rise buildings, believe it or not. Like I rented this bourbon here. You're on zero lot line and the owner will say, no, you can't come over here to paint your building or prepare it.
To be fair, I haven't asked him. I'm not saying there's a speed.
Might have a lot of decorations. Could have a mural.
Hey, that'd be fine. No neighborless dude here. Just practical, whatever.
Okay, awesome.
It'll be Tuesday, September sixth. Everyone will be here. Can you have pizza?
Thank you, Megan.
You're welcome.
I am the nine new business, private guy stamping, aesthetic and practical features evaluation. Uh, I am the nine, new business, uh, private guy stamping aesthetic and practical features evaluation. I think I remember doing one of these years ago.
You've done this for K-Space. Um, you did this for um. U I S. So you have done this in the past, um, in my tenure. I can't speak to. How this came about for you prior to my tenure, so um. The latest addition that Riedy died in is their um, their storage expansion, little over twelve thousand square feet. And um, they are now asking for a tax abatement. You know, the city has this, this. Checklist for determining how many years an abatement can be based on investment, job creation, um, et cetera. And one of the other components, and it brings the planning commission into it, is the aesthetics and practical features. So, excuse me, you are asked to evaluate this, the approved site plan, which is in your packet. Uh, as well as the landscape plan for aesthetics and practical features. And then award a point system based on a scale. Exemplary gets two points, well-designed gets one, adequate. Doesn't get any points, it's just there. So what I need for you to do is to look at the different. Uh, components, building architecture and site compatibility, building exterior and construction materials. Landscaping and screening, exterior lighting and identification, and then traffic flow, safety and efficiency. And then establish a point, the scale on each one, and then whatsoever it gets tallied up at the end and. They.
We all had, Matt, we've all got our things. Mike's got his bike rack. This evaluation, every time it comes up, it's like. This is ridiculous. Like, how do we compare industrial site to a single-family home? It's.
So you don't understand how it works, or?
No, I don't think it's right to ask us to put numbers on things, especially if there's hundreds of thousands of dollars at stake here, I mean.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any comments, questions?
I've already. I kind of think it's. Seem inappropriate to do this in the industrial park. This place where industrial stuff happens. Nobody is looking at these buildings. It's not like downtown site where we're worried about facade design, window, proportion, and all this other good stuff that. Makes architecture. This is just a steel building.
Adequate.
It's adequate, it's perfectly adequate.
I think that's, I think that's exactly what's the point. Some of the buildings go beyond just the. Brick office front with the steel building in the back. They will, they will put added investment into the building's architecture. Building materials and finishing. Same with landscaping. Are they going bare minimum? Or are they, they, are they asking waivers? Or are they really landscaping the site? Um, uh, not just meeting the standards, but utilizing them to create the best design in sight. Um, traffic flow and safety. Um, think about um.
Why don't you, why don't you, so we don't go in circles here. So first of all, we're not being asked to evaluate the process. We're being asked to evaluate these specific items and vote on. So, Michelle, why don't you take us through each one of these items and the planning commission will. Deliver each one in.
Okay, so start with building architecture and site compatibility.
Excellent.
Okay, uh, anybody disagree with that? There we go, adequate, next.
Um, building exterior and construction materials. Anybody disagree with adequate? Okay, landscaping and screening.
I can remember two on that. They put in a lot of plant. We could go to one easily, but.
Go one.
I can go one. I would go two.
Even though I'd like to know what PPG stands for.
Oh, that's, uh, PPG is usually a pine tree.
Okay. Right.
It sounds like there's more ones than twos.
One, one. Yeah.
Feel that strongly.
Okay, everybody who wants, give me two right here. Everybody wants the one?
The ones have that. Exterior lighting and identification.
Negative one.
Anybody?
I always saw two white walls.
Right, and it's looking at building lighting. Is there anything exceptional about it?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, zero. And then traffic flow, safety and efficiency.
That's what you're about to say.
Okay.
Bad sidewalk. I'll tell you, there's a lot of people that walk that way.
That is an exact quarter mile. Once around, so, yeah, I think, I think that's something that.
And it's interesting, I think.
Okay, so I just need somebody now to make the motion. Um, everything was a zero except for the landscaping and screening. So if somebody would make that motion.
I move that we assign the scores we just all discussed and voted on. Thank you, Jim. Was that Kyle's second?
Okay.
All three of you vote?
You need a vote.
Voice vote?
Healy?
Yes.
Car- Carty?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Marsh? Covert?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes. Jeff, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, there was. Council doesn't ask us to do that yet. Walk and jump on that.
What, we didn't ask you, us to do what?
Evaluate the process of doing that.
Oh, okay, no.
But it could be, I mean, if it was a beautiful building, I mean, you could have. Anyway, um, thank you, everybody. Uh, I will be, I'm new to business, annual report.
Okay, so normally what you get is four quarters of reporting and it consists of a little bit of narrative. And um, mostly this spreadsheet. So um, part of being in the redevelopment-ready communities, we're supposed to do this annual report and. It is required by the um, uh, planning enablement registration, but how you put that report out is really up each community. So um, I I utilize the format that the redevelopment-ready. Um, program is utilizing, made some tweaks to it, and what it does is it helps to. Um, it does two things. It provides that end-of-the-year report the planning commission's supposed to have. But it, it takes the narrative portion that we've always done in the past and gives it a nicer structure. It's a nicer report for you all to have, um, and to be presented to the city. And you get a chance to s- to see how it works with the spreadsheet, which breaks down not just the. Uh, planning, uh, or development review project that have come through. You get to see how much activity is going on as far as permitting, the zoning compliance permits. Final zoning compliance permits, and then just the regular zoning compliance permits that um. That one gets for right-of-way and things like that. Um, it's, it's a snapshot, but it, it looks a little nicer when it has.
Awesome.
I want to raise, I don't want to take from Allison's door, Allison's. I'm just.
Oh, where did that chair sit at?
Allison tried to slip that in there.
Oh, my bad, I'm sorry, I'm right now, sorry.
But if you are standing and waiting, just let me know.
If you have any feedback on me, that's fine, let me know, just send me an email.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So for, I don't know if everybody's familiar with a redevelopment, redevelopment ready program that's. It was designed years ago to help uh, clean up Michigan training. I mean, you see. Annual review by law.
Okay, your bylaws. It's a little bit since um, since these were looked at, there's a little. Few things to clean up, so um, so that's what we've done. And we are replacing village with city, citing a new planning and zoning enabling acts. Um, replacing objective and function and duties with powers and duties. And then we've reformatted all of the different sections and expanded their descriptions. And then we changed miscellaneous to adopt repeal, uh, and amendments. Lots of, lots of blood on this, you know, with lots of red lines. Uh, but there's also a clean copy and hopefully you had a chance to go through it and are okay with it. If you've got any questions, um, happy to answer them, but it really is just basic.
I have one question. Site inspections?
Which page are we on?
We are on page two of the clean copy. From my read of this, we're not supposed to dispute. I have, and I didn't realize that. Not, and it kind of applies to Z B A too, from my perspective. We can all walk around. Aren't we supposed to do that or can't we do that?
It says, site inspections, staff does, but if desired, no more than one member of the commission may accompany the zoning administrator. Or staff on site, if um. We can loosen that up, if you would like. Um, the object is that you all can go together, just like you would for Z B A. Z B As, you're expected to. Uh, review the site, so we can, we can clean that up so that.
We're just walking by when we decide.
No, but walking on the site could go on a different.
Yeah, that's a trespassing issue.
Right.
I mean, if it is, okay, I didn't realize that. Michelle, it doesn't say in our application for site plan or zoning board appeal or anything. That by signing the application and submitting that they've consented to the right for planning commissioner's staff. Yeah, I'm saying, I've seen that in other communities and we might look into that.
Yeah, that's good.
They care to care, build a site with an example where we really see what's going on.
Yeah, it's actually trespassing laws are a lot of teeth. I was at a, at a jury once and uh, or it's in a courtroom. Somebody, uh, some students had walked across a railroad right away in Ann Arbor. And were taken by the police and it was like a hundred and twenty-five dollars, like ten years. Just walking between buildings.
Yeah, I mean, times where I technically, we're not supposed to be on.
Right, even when I do code. I can't go on some of these property, I have to do it from. But I can check into what towns suggested. Um, that upon signing the application, you're, you're waiting whatever right and allowing it, but check out that language.
Isn't a site, I feel like the site inspection here is more of a formal process that the city is doing versus. Somebody from the planning commission going to a site, walking by and taking a look at it because there's something coming up before us. Like, that's not really a site inspection, that's just like the site.
Familiarizing yourself with the website.
Right, that's how, that's how I've read this in the past, is the site inspection is a formal thing being done by the city to make sure you're compliant with the site.
Yeah, it's a good point. It's inspection versus whatever else we might call it, which is a. Visit or something, but the, the issue's the same, it's like the trespasses are the same.
Sure, getting, going onto the site for sure, but this here, the way I'm reading it, it's more like Michelle doing her, you know, as part of her job, going to do the inspection.
I'm still waiting for somebody to offer me gift value over ten dollars.
You know, I thought.
And what will your client, you don't get bribes, you know, nothing, and I've seen it, we all get bribes. When I think, how come?
When we uh.
We're not the last one.
You weren't, you weren't on the planning commission yet, when we approved the strawberry cafe, which is. Now that house right there was originally supposed to be a cafe. And Matt and I were kissing the parking lot, taking bribes.
Oh, yes.
And I said to Matt, I'm gonna take a bribe if you're something bigger than the strawberry cafe.
Can I ask a question on page four? It talks about City of Dexter Municipal Office. Does that define somewhere or is that common knowledge?
And.
For example. I'm looking at that, so it's trying to be. An appointed member shall not hold another city of Dexter municipal office.
Um, you said page four.
Yeah, towards the top, I mean.
The red line.
Oh, you're looking at the red line, I'm looking at the green, okay. Okay, appointed member shall not hold another city Dexter Municipal Office. Um, in other words, an unlimited office.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, I want to say that, though.
Although, yeah.
I have two things, or, or, one, page fifty-eight. Um, it's on page forty-seven and then it comes up, that's the red, you know, the edited version and then fifty-eight. And it's just, if he gets a typo, that's, it's weird, I'm kind of strangely, and it is.
And annual.
Yeah, that's, that whole sentence is kind of funny.
An annual notice or written receipt of commissioning, shall comply. Yeah, I have too many hands.
And, and then should be add, not one, right? Well, it doesn't matter, but that's one, and then the other is on, also on page fifty-three. And it has to. Giving the public unlimited time to talk.
Thank you, Lauren. What I was, it was on, uh, public, under public participation?
Yeah, and somebody could be designated to represent a group, oh, here it is, I'm sorry, it's on page fifty-nine. And it's number three in article six.
The chairman limited the amount of time for each person wishing to make their comment.
Well, the very last sentence, if a single spokesperson selected that individual, she'll be able to make public comment at the commissioning without time limit or an extended time limit. But I, I, you know, the way I would read that if I, I think it could be read, there, there's no time limit. And we won't, we don't.
No, we don't.
Okay, we can think that.
When, when you're thinking about time limits, I'm on page. Fifty-one to sixty-one, public hearings, you say maximum twenty minutes, maximum five minutes. Is there a way that we could add in there that it could be extended by permission of the commission?
I'm, okay, page fifty-one.
Fifty-one.
Is there, there is a situation where you can think that would be necessary?
We've done it on council. Yeah, we just did it on council. I mean, I think it's more general, but it's.
I would just like to have the opportunity, twenty minutes is a long time, I would agree with that, but. And generous in a lot of communities, you'll get twenty minutes and get far less.
Yeah.
Um, but there has been occasion where, when I presented to communities, I sure would want at least thirty minutes, maybe, depending on the budget. Um, but even when it says the applicant response opportunity, five minutes may be not be enough if they're responding to multiple questions, so. If the commission had the opportunity to grant them extended time, that keeps the option there.
Interesting, so you want it under five, not under three?
I think it should be under three and five.
Okay.
Or however you order it, such that maybe any of those time limits can be extended by agreement or motion of the commission.
Anybody else have one? Very good.
Alright.
I have ten, new business.
So you want me to bring these back?
Yes. Next one, we have zoning ordinance updates.
Yeah. That's the next one.
Relentless officers.
No. That was a, that was a carryover from last month, we've been watching last.
I don't remember the relentless. I was at that zoning unit. Item eleven, citizens wishing to adjourn to commission. Say, no, motion to adjourn. Someone, is that close? Pretty, support who? Here or over here? Somebody, pick somebody. Tom, go over. Made into the record. No one back now. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Alan.